Alright, you guys, you have the touch and get it going. It's slow again. Okay, good morning. Morning. Today is the third day of December. Time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Identify yourself for the record, turn over here.
Josh Brown, Ada County Operations.
Tim Khan, Treasurer.
Job like paramedics.
Herb Cantu, landfill.
Ryan Blaine, Ada County Procurement.
Evan Habenhead, Procurement.
John Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Brad Smith, Sussar's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Real ID guy.
Kerry Reed, Quicks Office.
Bob Perkins, David Hank.
Thank you, thank you. And I'm clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one change to the agenda.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to change the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove agenda item, number five, eight, twenty-nine, three thirty-four. Tax cancellations for Eagle Fire Protection District.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? No, in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next we have some unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to remove some unfinished business from the table.
I'll move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Under unfinished business this morning, procurement has the award bid two-five-zero-zero-eight, the Ada County Coroner's Office Imaging Room Remodel FY twenty-five. And we were prepared to recommend an award date, but we will need additional time to review the bids received. And therefore, we'd like to request that this project be tabled to the December tenth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting for further consideration.
Okay, any questions, discussions? No, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table award bid number two-five-zero-zero-eight to the December tenth Open Business Meeting.
Second motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Kerry, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Yes. Okay, and our new business, we'll start out with some resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on resolution three-zero-four-six. A resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the emergency management department's budget. Any questions or issues on this resolution? Right now, I'll close the public hearing on resolution three-zero-four-six. And I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three-zero-four-six as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three-zero-four-seven. This is a resolution for the conveyance of two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen Chevrolet Tahos, Tahos from the Ada County Sheriff's Office to the Valley County Sheriff's Office. We're always happy to help our neighbors. Any questions or discussions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just curious why we're donating and not selling these through the normal process? Is it... How many donations do we do per year?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I don't know how many donations we do per year, but I do know that the Sheriff's Office has on occasions donated to some of our local counties here, Jim County, now Valley County. They do have the option to sell those, and we have sold a number of vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. But I think statute allows us to donate to other counties as a government agency.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'll accept the motion. I'll close the public hearing on resolution three-zero-four-seven and accept the motion.
I move to approve resolution number three-zero-four-seven, conveyance of Chevrolet Tahos to the Valley County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three-zero-four-eight. ARPA number forty-five, a resolution for use and transfer of allowable expenditures related to the American Rescue Plan Act budget. I know that Don is asking to talk about this.
We're waiting for a three-hour dissertation.
You've been waiting?
No. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would be happy to speak on this. We, we're in the home stretch as far as obligations, so this resolution is addressing four separate revenue replacement awards. One is to elections and the amount, I'm not going to give you all the breakdown, but the total amount of five hundred and twenty-nine, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred for some various elections equipment. Also, operations is going to get some equipment for about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Back when his kids there.
Mm-hmm, exactly. IT will be doing an audit as well as upgrading courtroom floor hundreds, so that award is two hundred and eighty thousand. And then lastly, weed, pest, and mosquito will be getting some new equipment and ATVs for better weed abatement for one hundred and three thousand one hundred and ten. And then we had an amount of thirty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars available of restricted funds that we are going to award to the coroner for some additional protective equipment. And so this kind of obligates us fully. We do have two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars left in revenue replacement that we will find appropriate use for. But as far as restricted funds at this point in time, we will be fully obligated.
I'm sure Treasury will appreciate the funding.
Yes, because February is going to be a heavy lift in terms of reporting, so.
Okay, well, good. Well, thank you, thank you. Any other discussion on resolution number three-zero-four-eight before I close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, just a congratulations to the staff for helping us fine tune that so that we, those dollars are well spent in Ada County. Because that's what they've done here, and I appreciate it.
Well, it should be noted that most of those projects would be funded with property tax dollars. In any event, and now we're not. They're funded by Treasury dollars from the U.S.
Exactly.
Alright, well, thank you. I'll close the public hearing on resolution number three-zero-four-eight. Call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three-zero-four-eight as listed on the agenda.
Second motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three-zero-four-nine. Resolution providing for the sale of Ada County personal property by the Board of Commissioners, that's us. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, my understanding, this is the computer for kids program.
Yep, that's what it is.
So to clarify for people who see that personal items, that's...
Yeah, it's some computers we no longer have use for, but the kids can make use of them. Alright, any other questions or discussion? I'll close the public hearing on resolution three-zero-four-nine. Call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-four-nine as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, now we get to procurement. Opening of RFP two-five-zero-zero-six, Consultant for Computer-Aided Mass Appraisal System Replacement. Must have something to do with the assessor.
It does.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received five proposals for RFP two-five-zero-zero-six. Evan has our Bonfire E Procurement System all queued up if you're ready for us to open.
We're ready. Evan, go ahead. Turn it on.
So just a little bit about this project. It's a project to hire a qualified consultant to assist with the creation of a strategy that will allow for the efficient management and accuracy of hundreds of thousands of parcels in Ada County and to increase transparency and ease of public use.
Okay.
And Evan has our five proposers up there. And going to bring them into the record, our first proposer is Fidelity Partners, followed by MSS Business Transformation Advisory. Proposal number three is Plant and Moran, P L L C. Proposal number four is Soft Resources, L L C. And proposal number five, Toku Saki, rounds out the field. So those are our five proposers, and we will need a little time for our evaluation team to review these and to come back to the board with a, an award recommendation. So we would like to request that this be tabled to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Okay, any questions? I'll accept the motion to table this till the seventeenth of December.
I'll move to table final rankings and award recommendation for RFP two-five-zero-zero-six to December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll see you back here then on the seventeenth.
Sounds good. Thanks, Commissioners.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, next up, we have alcohol licensing, licenses and catering permits. We have two catering permits and two new licenses. Any questions or discussions on the alcohol licensing and catering permits? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two catering permits as listed on the agenda and the two new licenses as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we have with us the clerk's office.
Good morning.
You've got ten minutes.
I will not take that much time, I promise you that. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We are excited and looking forward to when the ballot verifier for the November election is ready. So we're anticipating that within the next day or two, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, all of those images will be uploaded and ready for the public to examine. So we're looking forward to that. And then the only other update I have is if you haven't been downstairs in a while, you should come check out the remodel because we're getting close to being done with that and conference room's turning out really, really nice, and so we're excited about that, new space down there.
Good. Anything else going on?
There's always a lot going on, but I don't have anything else to report. It's good. They're anticipating that being done this month as well. We'll have a report for you after.
Good. Any questions for... Go ahead.
Just as a clarification, because I've gotten questions from people as far as the ballot verifier. Are we going to have something on our website that explains what's revealed, what isn't revealed, and how it's still a secret ballot?
Sure, yeah. I don't know that we have anything like that on our website right now clarifying how we do that, but that's a good idea. We can add something to the website about that.
That's the most often question. Okay, we're going to see ballots, but...
That's the biggest question.
How do we protect?
Is it going to be...
That is the biggest question. Again, we tell people about the ballot verifier and now we don't. You look at every ballot and go, "I thought it was a secret ballot."
Sure.
We say, "It is a secret ballot, unless you write your name on the ballot."
Exactly. If someone identifies themselves on their ballot, we're, they're essentially forfeiting their right to a secret ballot, but we take that very seriously, so yes.
Sure.
So we kind of explain that so people don't think that...
That is the biggest question that comes up. You probably ought to explain it somehow on your, on your, on the website. This is a secret ballot. You're just looking at the ballot, not the people who have cast it.
Yes, we can clarify that.
There's no way, no way to connect that to an individual.
Right.
You can connect it to a precinct.
Yeah, vote type, precincts, things like that, but...
But that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, but I think that's great. I just talked to somebody from the Secretary of State's office, and they're going to some conference where they're going to explain the ballot verifier next week to somebody.
Yeah, it's taken off, especially after that New York Times article.
Well, that's good. I think it's, it's, it's great that Ada County's leading the way. Clerk's Office and the Election Department is demonstrating that we can have good, solid election with, that's safe and secure.
Thank you, yeah, very much.
Alright, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize the claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel actions. I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
We'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And next up, we have the assessor's office. Oh, hi, Brad.
Good morning.
How you doing this morning? Okay, how's the assessor's office?
They're doing great. Still keeping busy. We're still filled quite a few calls over, coming from the Treasurer's Office, so kind of a joint effort there. And as we get closer to the deadline, December twentieth, those calls will pick up too, so that's keeping us pretty busy.
The Treasurer's Office calling you a bunch?
Yeah, they call us constantly. They actually, we work together, so we try to handle as many questions as we can for each side, so we're not bouncing people back and forth. So, yeah, trying to keep our employees educated on everything, so it works out really good. In regards to tax cancellations, we are coming up to the deadline. As we recall, House Bill five-sixty-two eliminated the deadline for the April fifteenth deadline. It made it basically December thirty-first. So between now and the end of the year, we'll be getting a lot of people that are kind of coming in last minute applying, which means we'll be doing tax cancellation for them. So we'll see a little surge in tax cancellations over the next couple of weeks. And unfortunately, since tax bills are out, these won't be reflected at this point. So it will be reflected on the second half of their tax bill as far as any adjustments that remain, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
And when people call in and, or apply for that, you clarify that in there with them, correct? That this is, they've already gotten their tax bill, this is going to apply, but apply later.
That is correct.
Okay, well, anything else?
We had, we pulled off a few of them this morning with change, so we had Eagle Fire Protection District that we pulled off. So originally, we had, I think, thirty-eight tax cancellations, and now we only have thirty-two, so.
Alright. And it should be noted that the, these are, we call them tax cancellations because that's what the law says, but they're actually just reductions.
That is correct.
Because of the home, homeowners exemption and a few other things. Okay, well, thank you. I'll then accept a motion on the tax cancellations.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda. And just for note, there's thirty-two, there's thirty-eight listed, but six of them have been removed at the beginning of the meeting. So it's thirty-two total, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a Treasurer's Office. Well, hi there.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, I thought I'd just provide an update to the tax collection process. The bills went out the week of November eighteenth. And since that time, we've collected, as of yesterday, fifty-three point three million of the, of the tax. The total tax charge, seven hundred thirty-one million, and half of that is typically what is collected, although some people pay in full. And so half of that is about three hundred sixty-five million, so we'll probably be collecting close to four hundred million prior to December twentieth.
You got that little machine that handles the envelopes, what's it called, a...
Well, the jogger.
Jogger, yeah, jogger, yeah.
As a matter of fact, we, we have a table jogger now. We have the larger one that's kind of at waist height. And then we have one that goes onto the table, and so we use both of them every day. And, yeah, it makes the process much smoother.
Well, good.
So as, yes, as Brad alluded to, the calls pick up quite a bit as soon as those bills go out. Our phones pick up, and as Brad said, we try to help each other out, so sometimes someone will ask about their assessed ballot. And of course, that was something that they were alerted to in May, but oftentimes, they don't pay attention until they get that bill. And then they want to challenge, they want to challenge that. So we, we kind of walk them through that, and usually that satisfies them.
Where do we next do, challenge their assessed ballot?
We do, we do tell them that. And oftentimes, that's the end of it, and they understand. But occasionally, they insist on more information, and so we'll transfer those calls.
Maybe something, call Brad?
And, and so, yeah, we do get a lot of calls during this time and lots of mail. But it makes the days feel quicker, and we all enjoy the challenge of it. So it's going, going very well so far.
Great. So we're getting it collected. Alright, anything else for us?
That's it.
Alright, well, good. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just as a clarification for anybody who may be listening, just look, looking at those numbers, the seven hundred thirty-one million. We collect it, we, meaning your office collects it, for all of the taxing districts and then disperse it, right?
That's exactly right, yeah. So, you know, everybody has different taxing districts. Some people will have, you know, ten items, for example, on there. And it is a bit confusing for a lot of taxpayers. They think Ada County is collecting all of that for Ada County. And they don't realize it's consolidated bill, so rather than getting ten different bills, for example, we consolidate them into one, makes it easier. Of course, we collect for Ada County, one of those lines, and the others, we're collecting on behalf of those taxing districts. We simply collect it, do the accounting work, and then we pass it on to those taxing districts.
The cities and the fire districts and...
Absolutely, yep.
Well, another, another item that's, I know it's, it's been an issue is if, if a person moved here from another state where they had a lot of equity in their home and they paid cash for their home here, they're used to paying their property taxes through their mortgage. But if they pay cash for it, then they don't. They have to write Ada County a check. And so that's why they're kind of surprised, and they say, "Oh, man, that's what..." But, but, but actually, our property taxes are lower than most of our surrounding states, particularly the ones that they're coming from.
Yes, that's correct, and we do get calls sometimes where someone has come from a different state. They get the bill, and they want to make sure it's correct because it seems, wow, this is, this is the whole year? Yeah, that's the whole year. And so some are pleasantly surprised. Not everyone, but, but a lot, as you say, they come from different states. They see a big difference.
Well, as, as Governor Lowell indicates, it's the cows that are moving here, the people from California, Oregon, and Washington.
Yeah.
And, and the, the property values in some of those states are a lot higher than they are here, particularly California. And if they've been using, making payments in California, mortgage payments, most mortgages require that the property taxes be paid through the mortgage. And so they, they get a big equity, they come here, they pay cash for a home, and then they get a bill from us, and they pay it. So takes a little getting used to. But, but then if they look at, they, they see that it's lower, quite a bit lower than the other states, the property taxes. Alright, anything else?
That's it.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the eight interim events at Expo Idaho. Any question or discussion on these events? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. And any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, now we have thirteen agreements. Any question about any of these agreements that we are doing? A lot of them are renewals, but... Anyone? Any question, Mr. Chair? Yeah, go ahead.
We have a couple related to the remodel of the Ada County jails. Somebody here who can talk about that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the kitchen remodel. We're working on that jail expansion, working through some of the language, which, which meant that we had to revise some language with our design team to extend some of that scope, so that's reflected on there. And that, yeah, both of those are related to that, and so that covers that, yes.
Okay. Any other questions about any of the contracts?
A couple landfill-related ones as well.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Commissioners? Yes, we have a few agreements for the acquisition of equipment. Agreements number three-zero-two-six-five and three-zero-two-six-six are for the procurement for some John Deere equipment along with a ham roller, no pun intended, since we just finished Thanksgiving here. Three-zero-two-six-five is for the ham roller.
And what's a ham roller?
It's essentially a smooth roller. Our existing unit is over ten years old. It was a former, former rental unit that we're looking to replace. It's undersized and is part of our program to help us right-size our fleet. The other John Deere equipment includes a grader, a motor grader, articulated dump truck, an eight-fifty dozer, and an excavator. This is all also part of our initiative to right-size our fleet. It was submitted in our FY twenty-five budget for this coming fiscal year or the current fiscal year. We also conducted an acquisition analysis between the vendor of Coastline and another vendor as well. By going through Coastline, we will be saving roughly eight hundred and forty-three thousand in the acquisition of this, of this equipment. So we're pretty excited about that, along with the fact that John Deere makes very good equipment. We feel very comfortable with the acquisition of these units and support that we'll have locally from our, our vendor.
Does that conclude replacements, or is this just one part of the replacement?
This is a significant portion of our transition. We have two compactors that will be terminated and leased at the end of this fiscal year. Staff will, we are assessing replacing those potentially with an Aljon unit, or Aljon units, we should say, and that will complete our, our transition.
What's an Aljon?
It's an Aljon compactor.
Oh, it's a brand.
Yes, sir. We sent staff out to Carson City to assess those units, and they seem to be very reliable with those units out there as well. Our most recent purchase of a compactor had an engine failure within five hundred hours.
Really?
So we're meeting with Caterpillar to understand what's going on with their units, essentially. There's been some trends under compactors that we need to look at alternatives besides just a cat unit.
Okay.
Got the leachate pond too?
Yes, sir. Agreement number three-zero-two-seven-three, Josh, feel free to chime in as well, is with GSC Construction. This is to help us address our leachate management situation. If you recall, last year in June, or the last fiscal year in June, we had to haul off over five hundred thousand dollars worth of leachate to a third-party vendor for treatment and processing. The goal here is to treat the leachate on-site, and so we are in the process of working with a design-build contractor to install six evaporator units that are called pit boss units. They are not barbecue units. And so we're excited about this project because one thing is we don't have to have any special licensing to facilitate the treatment of leachate utilizing an RO system. The permitting process is much more sophisticated, much more simplified, I should say, in regards to permitting these units. Additionally, the O and M cost, I believe, is roughly, it's estimated to be by the contractor over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars cheaper per year. We're assuming an O and M cost of these units of roughly twelve thousand eight hundred per year versus a hundred and ninety-five thousand to two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars per year. So the solution that was proposed is a very simple solution that will help us also keep our O and M costs down as well. So we're really excited about that initiative to help us avoid having to haul off any leachate in the future as well. This project is expected to go live or commence upon the execution of this agreement. I forget the lead time, Josh, on the assets. Do you recall roughly?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll send them a notice to proceed today, and it's nine weeks before they have them here. There's a little bit of prep work for the site for power required, but once, once they get that done, within nine weeks, we'll have operational fans. But to your point, they, it won't be until the spring before we actually activate them and turn them on. Water freezes here in the next few weeks, so not much about it.
Well, it's freezing today.
Yes, yes. So we're really excited about this project. It's going to help us manage our leachate, I think, in a much more efficient manner as we move forward.
And that prevent us having to build another leachate pond.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Which is a good thing.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think it's of note that the ponds will essentially be empty at the end of every summer according to the calculations that they gave us of the evaporation process, nearly three hundred percent, what we're getting now, so.
They must be big fans.
Massive fans.
And these units are proven, they've been deployed at other wastewater facilities, additionally, other linefills, so it's a proven technology that we're really excited about.
Good. Well, we're excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just comment, Mr. Chairman, and to thank him for, and remind people, this is an enterprise fund, so this is self-sustaining. And every time he helps us do something like this... and remind people, this is an enterprise fund, so this is self-sustaining, and every time he, he helps us do something like this, saving money, it actually helps us not have to increase rates for our.
I would have loved to have tapped into those ARPA funds for the, the equipment, but. Understood.
Well, there's a couple thousand dollars left.
So, so thank, thank you for that.
Thanks.
And people need to know that too, that otherwise, we'd have to use taxpayers.
That's correct, we're trying to keep our, our costs down here, most definitely.
Well, the landfill's got a share of ARPA.
Yes, we did.
During the year.
We did, and, and this project here is our refund in the leachate treatment, so I think we should be able to return anywhere from five hundred thousand to potentially.
Six hundred grand.
Six hundred grand, around there, so. Yeah.
All right, well, good enough, well, thanks, thanks. Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll accept a motion on the contracts.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I move to authorize the award of the, um, the agreements as listed on the agenda, thirteen agreements as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
And authorize the chair to sign the documents.
All right. Okay, you've heard the motion, uh, any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next item up is the weekly indigent items. Any question or discussion on the weekly indigent items? Not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated December third, twenty twenty-four. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Hey, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, last thing on the men, on the agenda is miscellaneous. We had a request, uh, this week from, uh, our, uh, trash hauler for the unincorporated areas to raise the rates that, the fees that he gets paid, or that the company gets paid. And it seemed to be, uh, they made a presentation, and we have the cost analysis here, and it doesn't seem unreasonable. Is there any questions or discussion?
Oh, I'll, uh, maybe kick it to landfill director, did you have any, any thoughts on this?
I have, I have not been privy to those documents, I wasn't privy.
Well, we, we reviewed it, and, uh, I think based on the presentation, it seemed like a reasonable request for increase.
Well, I think so, so I accept a motion.
Uh, I move to approve, I, I would agree with, we took some extra time to analyze these figures.
Yes, we looked at the, at the numbers, and their costs have gone up, just like everybody else's costs, the, the variable costs, the insurance premiums. I just paid my insurance premium for my house, I know the insurance premiums are going up. And, uh, the cost of operations, I think it's a reasonable request.
So I would move to approve the hardened sanitation rate increases as listed on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there further discussion? Uh, it should be noted that, uh, that, uh, in their contract, uh, they, they are entitled to a two point four percent, I think, is that it?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and, uh, this gives them an additional two point six percents for a total of five percent, which seems to be a reasonable amount.
When you calculate the, the actual monthly rate, it's very minimal.
Yes, it, it, it might, it might facilitate a sixty or seventy cent increase in, in rates, I'm not sure, it's not that much, so. All right, any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Any further business needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, uh, today is the third day of December, the time is nine thirty-six. The board is in session, uh, acting as the board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District. All three commissioners are present, we also have with us.
Childlight Purvis.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
And Real ITI. Okay. Uh, there any changes to the agenda, ma'am clerk?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda, okay. First item up is time-sensitive emergency EMS designation award.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, this is, uh, a, it's a significant acknowledgement by the state TSC Committee. The thing that I like about it the most is that, that, um, we're, uh, the designee, but really, it's an acknowledgement that for time-sensitive emergencies like stroke and trauma and heart attacks, um, we are really good system partners. Uh, so everything from your interaction with, uh, any local, um, uh, health community partners, uh, our access partners, uh, hospitals, medical direction, um, the procedures and standard written orders that, that are paramedics practice, uh, by, um, all of those things are in place to, uh, create a system that works seamlessly, uh, for folks that are experiencing these, uh, emergencies. So you could expect, um, rapid treatment in the field, um, good communication between those providers so that a hospital, uh, designated, uh, hospital or facility, um, is prepared to receive those patients, not be caught flat-footed, and have a good continuation of care, uh, especially for those emergencies where minutes are really important.
Okay, well, that's good. And, uh, we don't need to do anything, just acknowledge it.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Correct, well, and we acknowledge it, thank you very much, I think it's great.
It is fantastic, isn't it?
Yeah, and it's, uh, great that, that the state acknowledges, uh, good work.
This, uh, I think it's, uh, noteworthy to say that, that we do have the designation historically, we haven't necessarily prioritized this. The, the contents of that evaluation, the acknowledgement by the state are things that we've been doing for quite some time.
All right, well, great. All right, moving on, we have Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to approve the EMS claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
carries, thank you, now we have, uh, uh, three agreements, any questions or discussion on any of these agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you've got, in addition to the, uh, the, uh, TSC. Time-sensitive DSA notification, any other updates for us?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not, I was away for a week, and I'm reliably informed that the Thanksgiving, uh, week was quiet. I'm willing to accept that and move on.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
How is Sean?
Uh, as, uh, as Steve Rutherford would say, he sounds like forty miles of bad road.
Oh.
But, but, uh.
Forty miles of bad road, okay, I already had a little case of that.
I believe he's on mend, uh, still another day away.
Yeah.
And more thankful for that.
Yeah, well, good, well, we're wishing him well, and hopefully he gets back in, in good shape.
And you've had a smooth road. That's right.
All right, anything else for us?
That's it.
All right, unless there's anything else, uh. We'll be adjourned.
Very well.
Thank you, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.